Listen. Okay, welcome, welcome to another edition of Johnson Spotlight. That's right. We're here once again highlighting another young person who is doing great things in our community. And we're here with another edition of Johnson Spotlight. And our guest tonight is Mr. Hiram Davis. He is running for the Colliton County Council seat at large. We are so grateful that he's here with us and we want to spotlight him. Once again, I want to first of all, thank you all for supporting and for just showing your love towards Johnson Spotlight the way that you do. Thank you so much for all of your support and your kindness and all of your love. If you all would, please bear with me one second. Once again, we thank you for tuning in, for helping us to make Johnson Spotlight such a great success. And we are here tonight. Listen, if you have anyone that you would like to spotlight on Johnson Spotlight, please send us an email at JohnsonSpotlight1@gmail.com. That's JohnsonSpotlight1@gmail.com. Tell us about yourself and what you're doing or about that person who is needing to be spotlighted, that is doing something extraordinary in the community. All we're about is about giving each other the support that they need in whatever it is that you're doing, whether you're selling something, whether you're running for a political office as our guest is tonight, or whether you're just making a difference in your community. We want to hear about that intriguing conversation that you have for us. And we want to spotlight you on Johnson Spotlight. So without further ado, we have with us Mr. Hiram Davis, as I said before. He is running for the county seat, Colliton County Council seat. The member at large seat at large. And we have him here. Mr. Davis, we're so grateful to have you with us tonight. Thank you for accepting our invitation to be our guest tonight on Johnson Spotlight.
No problem at all. Glad to be here.
Yes, sir. Glad to have you once again. And we want everyone to know that Johnson Spotlight can be viewed YouTube under Johnson Spotlight and on Facebook under Johnson Spotlight as well. So without further ado, we're just going to jump right on into the conversation. And we're going to, just getting to ask you a little bit of questions and know that you're you're running for that county seat there in Colliton County. First of all, we want to ask you just to tell us a little bit about yourself, sir.
Well, again, my name is Hiram Davis. I'm a native of Colliton County by way of Walterboro. I'm a 2009 graduate of Colliton County High School. I relocated to the Atlanta area in 2015 to attend Worcester School. I stayed there for over five and a half years. And back in April of 2021, I relocated back to Colliton County because I need to get here to make some changes. I would visit often, you know, during my time while I was in Atlanta, and of course, I was born and raised here. So I would, every time I would come home, I would say, man, things are still like this, and they're still doing things like this. Things are still, you know, behind times, especially being in Atlanta is fast paced. They're always doing new stuff, being creative, you know, the market there is great. So I said, I'm moving back to Walterboro and I'm going to put my name in the hat. My initial thought was I was going to do something with politics like in 24. But when I found out that this seat was becoming available, I said, you know what? I'm going to do it in 2022. So I don't have a whole long resume. A lot of people know that I work at a funeral home locally here in Walterboro. I also work in law enforcement in North Charleston. And that's pretty much me in a nutshell. So I'm just here to make a difference. I want to make a difference in the community where I was born and raised.
Okay, great. Coming back to the little town of Walterboro. To make a difference in, so what would you say inspired you to become a candidate for this particular seat at large?
Well, my, my little walk in politics started a few years ago when one of my friends asked me to be her campaign manager for her campaign. I'm like, campaign manager? I've, I've been involved in politics. I've been, you know, helping like the different parties and stuff do different things, but I've never been an actual campaign manager. So then a campaign manager in the city of Atlanta, like, that's a lot of work. That's okay. I'll try. I'm going to need some help, but I'll try. So it started then, since then, I've been the campaign manager for four other campaigns.
Wow.
All of those campaigns were successful except for one. And all of those candidates, they won their seats, like I said, except for one. So in this year, when I found out that the current seat that is held by Mr. Gene Wetzel, he will be retiring, I thought that that will be a prime opportunity. Number one, because I know that that seat has been held by him for a number of years. And I knew that it was going to be a lot of people trying to get that seat because that's a very important seat because that seat doesn't just cover one specific district in Colliton County. It covers the entire county. That's why it's called at large. So anybody that's a resident and a voter in Colliton County, you can vote for that individual running for that seat. So I thought, okay, this is your time. I prayed about it. I always put God first in anything that I do. I prayed about it and I put my name in the hat and here we are today. So it's, it's, it's a lot of work. But again, I just want to get out to the people of Colliton County and let them know that we need somebody that's going to be not just open minded to be able to kind of start, you know, initiating a change here in Colliton County, but somebody that's also transparent, somebody that's going to get in there and do the job. And a lot of people are running for this seat, but only one person can have this seat. So I hope that the citizens of Colliton County do their homework, you know, research your candidates and make sure you make smart decisions when you go to the poll vote.
Good. All right. I saw on your website, Mr. Davis has a website, everyone. We want you to go and visit his website. It's www.davisforcolliton.com. That's Davisforcolliton.com. Go there and you'll learn a whole lot more about him on his website. There's also several places that you have there about voting, registering to vote, knowing that May 13th, which is tomorrow, actually is the registration deadline in person. So if you're not registered to vote, you need to be registered to vote by tomorrow, which is May 13th. And that May 15th is the registration deadline for email, for fax or email to be able to send your votes back in on that way. So Colliton County residents, if you are not registered to vote, tomorrow is the deadline for that. And then if you fax it in or email it, then you have until Sunday, which is May the 15th. And all this is on Mr. Davis's website. So when you say, when we see that it says that you're at large, you're, you're, you're running for the seat at large, explain to the, the viewers, what does the member at large or the seat at large, what does that mean? For, I think, I think you kind of hit on it in your explanation, but if you would just expound on that a little bit more.
Yeah. So the seat at large is pretty much, I look at it as being a swing vote seat. Because if you, for an example, if you have, the, the council is set up with five members. And currently it's held by three Republicans and two Democrats. So if you have a, if you have two Republicans and two Democrats, whoever holds this seat, you know, that's who's going to, that, that's, the votes is going to be pushed through unless you get a whole, a whole council that's going to vote or agree with one thing. So that pretty much is it in a nutshell. So again, that seat covers the entire county. Anybody in the county can vote for it. Unlike the other four seats, you have to be within a certain district to vote for those individuals. But for the county council seat at large, anybody in the county can vote for that person. And that seat is going to determine, especially if it's set up, if the council is set up like it currently is, where you have two Republicans and two Democrats, that's going to determine how that council is running. So at this current moment, again, we have three Republicans and two Democrats. We have the Republican that holds the current council seat at large. And we have two other Republicans in, in the two district seats. And then we have two Democrats in two district seats. So that's pretty much how that is, is set up here in Colliton County.
Okay. So as a member of large, when you, when you assume this seat and you become the member at large there, what will be your main responsibilities?
Well, it's the, other than what I said earlier about, about how the, how it's set up and how, how the voting would go. That's pretty much it. Other than that, that council seat, just a regular council seat. Outside of it being of your curtain, being your swing vote seat, if council is set up the way it currently is. Now, let's say for an example, because we also have a district seat that's becoming available. Excuse me, actually two, but one doesn't have anybody running against him. So one of our district seats this year does have somebody running against him. And let's say for an example, that individual loses his seat. Well, then we will be down a Democrat seat. And we would then have, you would then have three Republicans and back the two Democrats. So at that point, it still wouldn't be, you know, balanced. Because I, if I were to win the council seat at large, then it would still only be myself and another Democrat. So it's, it'll still be off balance.
Off balance.
Yeah. So I tell people all the time, you know, do your research of all of your candidates and see how things are set up because you can vote me in. But if you don't vote smart with the other candidates, then I'm still on it by myself, or myself and another, and another person that's Democrat.
Yeah.
We still not going to have the majority of the council.
That's right.
So again, I tell people all the time, you have to do your homework. And I try to do educational series of folks when I'm out campaigning and stuff, just to make sure. Because a lot of people don't understand how it's set up. I can get a whole slew of people to go vote for me, but if you don't vote smart for the other candidate, then I'm still going to be out there by myself and we still won't get any changes done because we're still going to be outnumbered.
That's right.
That's pretty much how that's set up. So other than, other than being that swing vote, if council is set up the way it is right now, this is still just a regular council seat with the exception of I will be a representation of the entire county. So from South Carolina all the way to Edisto Beach, South Carolina, you will be under my umbrella. So I will be responsible for over 38,000 people.
Wow.
Yeah, that's.
Thirty-eight thousand people.
We are right close to 38,000 registered voters here in Colliton County. And that's registered voters now. That's not our population because.
Yeah, yeah.
People are not registered to vote as well, so.
And I don't think we can stress it enough, people to get out there and get registered to vote.
Yes.
Get registered to vote, people is not difficult, is not hard. Please get out and get registered to vote, you know.
You don't even have to do it by paper anymore. When I'm out talking to folks, you know, I keep my iPad with me, my team members, my campaign manager and team members, they keep their iPads with them and their cell phones with them. Because you could actually register to vote yourself. You don't have to do any paperwork. Go to scvotes.org and you click on register to vote and it's literally an easy process. You put in your ID number or your driver's license number, whichever one you have, put in your address, this is your basic information, and literally, man, you register to vote with less than three minutes. And then they'll send your registration card in mail. On your registration card, it would tell you all of the seats that you know that you can vote for. And it will also tell you your voting or your polling place where you will go and vote. So it's literally three minutes or less. If you text savvy, you probably can do it in about a half a minute, minute. You know, just to register to vote. So many people have died so we can have the right to vote.
Right.
I mean, and I'm not going to say minorities, not just black folks, women have died. You know, at one point, women couldn't vote. So a lot of people lost their lives, they lost their livelihoods, they went to jail, they got beat up, they got sprayed with water hoses. So that we can have, everybody can have the right to vote. So I don't care if you vote for Hiram Davis or not. I want you registered to vote and I want you to go vote. Registered to vote, not going to vote, that's like having, having, having a lamp without oil or vice versa. So, you know.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You got to, you got to do both processes and, you know, I can't stress the milk. And you know, check with your children, check with your grandchildren. If you have somebody that is going to be 18 before the election, they can register to vote. So if you have somebody that's 17 now, and let's say they won't be 18 until June 15th. Well, they can't vote in the June 14th primary, but they can vote in a November 8th January election. So get them registered to vote. It's very important that we have everybody registered that is eligible to vote.
That's correct. That is correct. So you said they can go and register themselves to vote. You don't have to leave your house. If you got a cell phone, which everybody got a cell phone, I'm sure. It takes less than a minute to go scvotes.org, scvotes.org. And you can just fill out your information there. Take less than a minute. Please go and register to vote. Long as you're 18 years old, before June the 14th, you can vote in this primary election, which is, this election is going to be on June the 14th. So that, that's simple. I mean, just go out and, 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 and do what you need to do. Now, on his website, you call yourself the voice for the people. Your voice, your choice. Explain to us.
Well, the first part, the voice for the people. I sat down and I said, I need to catch some, get something that's going to be catchy, that's going to attract people's attention. Anytime I'm voting, anytime I'm selecting a candidate to, because I've always been one to do my homework. I don't just go to the, to the poll and just pick a, push a button. I'm going to research you. I'm going to find out who your mommy is, your daddy is, your grandma. I'm going to find out how many M and Ms and skaters you eat as a two-year-old. I'm going to find all out about you because I want to know because that's important to me. And I, I, and I, I think everybody should do that. But one of the most important things I look for is people that's actually going to be a spokesperson and be a representation for the people. A lot of times, and then a lot of times that can be kind of misleading because a lot of people can have, oh, I'm the voice for the people or I'm for the people. But then they get elected and you don't see them anymore until the next election. Or you don't see them anymore until they are hot water and they asking you to kind of help them get through this hot water. So you need somebody that has a voice for the people. I'm not just talking about black people. I'm not just talking about white people. I'm not just talking about women. I'm not just talking about men. I'm talking about people at large. Every single.
Everybody.
Be important. I don't care if you're a Democrat or Republican. Once you're elected, you should still look out for the well-being of every single person. So that's why I got that first part from the voice for the people. Because I'm always going to be a, a vocal box for the people of Colliton County at all times. When it gets to the part that says your voice, that means, you know, when I'm in council meetings, I plan to speak as if I am the people out in the community. Outside of just being a council member, I'm still a member of this community. And I am elected, or will be elected to serve the people of this community. So they may not be in that meeting, but I'm in the meeting. They hired me because if they elect me, that means they hired me to do a job. And my job is to make sure that I am their voice and I'm allocating for them when they cannot be present. So that's where the part where it says your voice. And your choice, just, we just kind of added that in there because we want people to, we, we, I want to be everybody's choice. So your voice, but I want to also be your choice. So that's where I also came in at, yeah.
Okay, I like that. I like that. The voice for the people. Colliton County, we got some big things to do on the 14th in the primary election. And I'm advising everyone, if you're 18 years or older, if you're going to be 18 by June 14th, make sure that you go and register to vote. scvotes.org, scvotes.org. You can go there on your cell phones, your tablets, iPads, whatever, and you can register yourself to vote. Mr. Davis here has a website, davisforcolliton.com. You can go to that website. You can find a whole lot of bunch of more information about him. And, you know, there's several things on there, you know, we've got several things coming up, got events and stuff. You can even volunteer to be a part of his campaign, you know, just put your information in there. And, and you can, you know, be a part of that as well. So please go and support his website. He is running for the Colliton County Council seat at large, representing everybody, everybody in the county of Colliton County. He told us that it's at least 38,000 registered voters there in the county. And he's ready to be the voice and the choice for the, every last one of those candidates. Now, could you give us some key points of your campaign, some things that you want voters to know?
Well, my most important thing that I'm focusing on is trying to make sure that no one is left out in any decisions that's made in this, in this county. And my platform ranges from, I mean, it goes, it goes from one thing to the next, literally. But the most important thing is I want to make sure that nobody is, is left out, any decisions is made. So currently, we have, what they have going on is our rankings for projects that they're going to be working on in the coming years. We have councilmen, we have 20 projects that, well, we have more than 20 projects, but they have a top 20 projects that they have ranked. And we have councilmen that have voted to put the jail as number one and to put Y and C A and additional recreational facilities, pools, et cetera, as number 20. Well, we all know if it's ranked at number 20, it's not going to get done. So they don't even have our children ranked in the top 10. They have them ranked 20, then they have the jail ranked at number one. I work in law enforcement. I started out my law enforcement career working in corrections and in detention. I know that inmates have, a lot of people don't know, they have more rights than individuals on the street do. They're always going to be involved in lawsuits. And one of the biggest lawsuits that a lot of detention centers and jails get is that they are in deplorable conditions. They're not treating the inmates right. If, you know, they're ran down, whatever. That's the case that we have in Colliton County. I'm not saying that we don't need a new jail because I reviewed a lot of the lawsuits and a lot of the lawsuits come from having deplorable facilities at the jail. But at the end of the day, that can be ranked number one, but our children should be number two or number three. And the next thing is they have, like the coroner's office. Colliton County has to take their loved ones, the coroner has to take people's loved ones to various funeral homes and leave them there or take them to other areas outside of Colliton County because the hospital morgue doesn't hold so many decedents. And so they have to take them to funeral homes and other places because we don't even have a county morgue. We have a population, we have a registered voter population of 38,000 people and we don't even have a county morgue to put our decedents in. That is horrible. And it definitely makes sense that we have people that sit on this council and they only think about themselves. Back to the recreation and the pool thing. Okay, so I don't know, Mr. Johnson, I don't know if you remember or not. I don't know if you were around, I might have heard about it. But in the seventies, they had a pool in Colliton County. They, that was right after integration and all this kind of stuff. They took dirt and they filled in these pools. Comment was made that they did not want Negroes swimming with white folks. That is the exact comment that they made. I hate to say that word, but that's the exact word that was said to me. I seen it in statements. I seen it written, written, some paperwork that was written.
Yeah.
And we have councilmen that were involved with that, covering that up.
That are still on the council now.
So they weren't councilmen then, but they were involved with covering the pool then. Now currently serving as councilman.
Yeah.
And they were going to see him councilman that did not want a pool in Colliton County. You know what they say? Well, a pool was too much maintenance. How was it too much maintenance? You mean to tell me St. George and Hampton?
Yeah.
Ain't telling a pool as small as they are in Colliton County?
Yeah.
Something was with that. It's just not really right. So again, my platform is, 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 I have a lot of things in my platform. I'm even aspirational to affordable housing, to being able to get people affordable wages here, especially like our county employees, they don't make nowhere near us. We don't have any type of competitive pay. And that's the reason why we get trash working for, I'm not downing any of our workers that we currently have for Colliton County. Trust me, everybody that works in Colliton County, they're, we're getting to scratch some other counties because we don't have a competitive pay. We're getting people that get fired from other counties. So they say, well, you know, Colliton County, I'll take anybody. Oh, I can go there because they don't pay nobody. So I can just go there. And we have a lot of people that work for our county that's here and that have been fired, terminated, or lost their jobs in other counties or other agencies or whatever the case may be. And they're currently working in Colliton County because they know Colliton County is going to hire anybody because they know about us is not going to come here because they don't pay anything.
That's right.
That, but we don't even have equitable wages for any of our people that work in our county. We don't have any type of infrastructure plans here, positive infrastructure plans. Just last year, we had a whole major highway that washed out, Hendersonville Highway washed out, was closed for, for several weeks before they can get that repaired. Like, we have a lot of work to do here in Colliton County. And it's going to take somebody that's not going to get in and twiddle their thumbs. And it's, it's going to take somebody to get in and that's actually going to speak up and going to speak up for the benefit of everybody. And not speaking up for self, but speaking up for everybody. One more thing, one more key point I want to mention is that a lot of these councilmen, they, both city and county councilmen, they have a lot to do with a lot of these businesses in this county. So of course, they don't want to see new business come to Colliton County because that would then put a damper in a lot of the investments that they have in these small businesses. But the issue that I have with the small businesses in this county is, is that they're spoiled and that they think that they run the world and they think that nothing can get done without their business. Well, I want to let you know that if Hiram Davis is elected, that is going to change because you are ripping off the people of Colliton County and you are being rude to the people of Colliton County. And guess what? The people of Colliton County just keep going back because they don't have a choice. Because they don't, a lot of people don't have adequate transportation that can, you know, go back and forth to Charleston or Somerville every day, or Buford or Hilton Head every day. So they're just selfish when it is, you know what I'm saying? A lot of people have a hard time just getting from the rural areas to get to town to do this. So more or less going all the way to Charleston or somewhere else. They are actu- absolutely, they, they are spoiled. They think that the world is going to, you know, the world is going to stop because they, because they stop. We have a business right here in Colliton County right now. Always used to be rude to people. And let me tell you, to this day, to this day, they close probably maybe once or twice a month, sometimes more than that because they don't need mad people to work for. Because they don't, I'm talking about a busy booming business, a very popular business here in Colliton County. They have to close their doors because they don't have people to work for. Well, I wouldn't work either. Because you, you want people to come work and still, we're still in the midst of a pandemic and you still want to pay them six or seven dollars an hour. I wouldn't work either.
Oh, no, no, no.
I wouldn't work either. Then you want them to come in and work 12-hour shifts and go there working at a hospital or somewhere making a decent wage, if you know what I'm saying. Everyone's working $67 an hour, you're just going to work 12-hour shifts and they, and they can only be off one day a week. I wouldn't work either. I would quit too. And I would cause you to do exactly what you're doing, which is closing your doors once a week.
Wow.
And they have the business, but they don't have the workers.
Don't have the workers.
And it's several businesses here. It's one business here, Mr. Johnson, I would patronize if I had to drive to New York City to get something done. Because they are rude and they think that, okay, we're the only business here like this, so we can treat our customers anyway. And that, and let me tell you, they've lost a lot of business, but then they still gain a lot of business because they are the only business of that type here in Colliton County. So it's going to be my job to make sure we bring new stuff here. Make sure that we bring in some, some decent jobs that folks can have not only a equitable wage while they're working, but a job that offers their full benefits such as retirement, medical or health insurance and life insurance, because a lot of these jobs, even now, still don't offer their workers health and life insurance in 2022. That's crazy.
Crazy.
A lot of work to be done here in Colliton County. Man, I could go on and on and on. But it's a lot of work that needs to be done here in Colliton County. And we have a lot of people that's running for this seat because they, they're running because of popularity or they're running just to get self-gain. I'm not running for any of that. I'm not wanting to make money because the council doesn't pay no money. I still, I'm still going to have to work a full-time job. So at the end of the day, I'm not working, I'm not running for this seat to make money or to have myself put up on a platform or a pedestal. I'm working because I thoroughly want to bring a change to this county and help out the citizens of this county. Not just the citizens, but myself as well as I also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and what's a good thing is that you have been away from the county. You've seen different things that can be, you know, you're, first of all, you're a young man. You know, in my dealings with the county and being also a native of Colliton County, knowing that a lot of our people on the county are, nothing against older people, but they're older, you know, and they're setting their ways in a, you know. And I've, I've known personally of some things, some businesses that have. Some businesses that have tried to come into the county, but they have been blocked, because like you said. Those older mom and pop type businesses that did not want to allow the change to come into the neighborhood. Um, uh, you know, uh, I'll throw it out there, I've heard, uh, there's been Chick-fil-A that's been trying to come, or that wanted to come at one time. You know, things have happened where they didn't get a chance to come, you know, um, and, but they need to be some newer. Uh, innovative type um, businesses in the county, so. Start to flourish, you know, I'm, I'm shocked when you said there's a business still giving somebody six or seven dollars an hour. That's horrible. I mean, who can live off of that today with inflation and all that stuff going on? I mean, come on, man, you, I mean, even after the pandemic, you know? And, and I'm not sure about any other places, but I do know, uh, like you said, there are businesses that close, they close down. They have to close, they're not open on their regular days, because of the fact that they don't have workers, enough workers that can. Manage the place, you know, they're taking to-go orders still. Um, because they don't have enough people to come in there and actually serve you throughout the day, you know, all the shift, what have you, so. Uh, those are some very good key points that you have there, sir, and uh, you know, that we just wanna encourage the people. In Collin County, get out and vote. Everybody can vote for Mr. Hiram Davis on the ballot come June fourteenth, if you are a registered voter. Uh, how do you become a registered voter? Go to S C votes dot org. Fill out the information so that you can become a registered voter, and so that you can be prepared to vote in this primary election. If you're eighteen years or older, eighteen at least by June the fourteenth. June fourteen is only, uh, let me see, your, uh, his website here has the um. The countdown on there, and so you only have about, let me see, is, is uh, thirty?
Thirty-two days?
Eighteen, nineteen hours, fifty-three minutes and fifty-one seconds. Left to go out and uh, before the day of the election, so please do what we need to do in Collin County. You can visit Mr. Davis's website at Davis for Colliton dot com. Uh, you mentioned about the pool. Uh, I wasn't around when the pool came or was, was around, but I heard about the pool, and you know, like you said, they did not want Negroes in the pool, you know, um. And, and they did cover them up and, you know, and everything, but. My idea is just right here, if you have activities for the young people to participate in. Then the young people won't have to go to other counties to participate in their, their activities, you understand? If you have something constructive for their mind to do, you know, instead of building the jails and stuff where you ultimately feel that they should be. Or that they will end up being and have other routes where you can expose them to other things. Then you have the, the young people have something to do that's more creative with their minds, you know? And so, yeah, that's something that we really, really need in the county, sir, and so. Uh, like you said, he is the voice for the people, your voice, your choice. Mr. Davis, is there anything else that you'd like to uh, give to our people today before we end our session here?
Yes, I also would like to give a couple of other dates that's coming up, um, the first date for in-person absentee voting is gonna be May sixteenth. Um, that's May sixteenth, which is this coming Monday. Um, coming up Monday is May sixteenth, um, and it is the first day of absentee voting. Um, and absentee voting can be done at the Collin County Voters Registration Office, which is at twenty-four seventy-one. Jeffries Highway here in Walterburg, which was the former Palmetto Rule, um, building where you used to pay your, your phone bill at. Um, so that's twenty-four seventy-one, uh, Jeffries Highway, Collin County Voter Registration Office, that is the first official day of absentee. Um, voting is May sixteen. Also, um, on May fourteenth and May fifteenth, which is this coming Saturday and Sunday. Um, my campaign will be out uh, in smokes in the Johnsville Community for their annual Mayfest event. Um, and that's Saturday, um, at eleven AM, they're gonna have a parade followed by a family fun day for the rest of that day. And then on the fifteenth, which is Sunday, um, they have a gospel concert that will conclude, um, their Mayfest event. And that starts at five PM at the Johnsville Community Center. Um, on Tuesday, May seventeenth, um, the Collin County Democratic Party, um, Edisto, um, Friends. Uh, will be hosting a meet the candidate event, all the Democratic candidates will be at that event. And that's gonna be at McConkey's Jungle Shack, and that's gonna be at one oh eight Jungle Road in Edisto Beach. Um, and that's for anybody that's in that Edisto Beach area, anybody can come, but definitely if you are resident of Edisto Beach, we would love to see you out at that event. And finally, a very important event that I would love for people to participate in. Um, this is gonna give you the opportunity to kind of hear from your candidates, um, both Democrat and Republican. On Tuesday, May seventeen at twenty, um, excuse me, I was getting ready to give military time, at five o'clock. Five PM, we're gonna be assembling at the Collin County Memorial Library. Um, there's gonna be a town hall sponsored by the Walterburg Collin Chamber of Commerce. Uh, that town hall starts at five thirty, but I think we're gonna start assembling at five PM. Um, and first up will be the Democratic candidates, they will have, I think, fifteen minutes. Or maybe two or three minutes to answer three questions each, um, and then the Republican Party will be right after. Uh, an hour after, and I think they're doing theirs differently, they're gonna ask the three questions and then they will. Uh, have fifteen minutes to respond to all three questions. Um, so they're doing theirs a little differently, but both Republican and Democratic candidates for County Council Seat at Large will be there. Again, this is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, so most of these questions will be centered around, um, business. You know, bringing business to the community, um, that kind of business stuff, because that's what the chamber focuses on. So again, outside of that, that's all that I have, again, please visit my website, that's Davis for Colliton dot com. It's a lot of resources on that website, we're gonna have upcoming events there, we need candidates, but we need volunteers to assist. We need volunteers to assist by campaign, we have a lot of stuff to do, um, from door to door, um, um. Canvassing to phone banking, all of that stuff, we have to get covered, um, between now and June fourteenth. Um, also, um, we do have yard signs, if anybody's interested in the yard sign, you can um, email us at hiramforcolliton@gmail. Dot com, and we will, um, just put your, uh, your name and your address in there and your phone number. And we will deliver a sign to your yard. Uh, we are still putting out signs in the community, so if you don't see a sign in your community, just give us a little more time, we're still working again. We have to cover from again, from smokes all the way to Edisto Beach. Um, and we had to order more signs, because we ran out, because we had a lot of people wanting signs for their personal yards as well. So again, we have signs now, so please contact us if you need a sign. Again, do your homework, do your research, um, um, some of the other candidates, I mean, they really don't even have a clue. They're just running, just to say that they're running. And so I want you to go do your research and make sure you look up these candidates and see who you are voting for. Again, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for this opportunity, um, and everything that you do for the community, I've been watching several of your other spotlights. You're doing an awesome job, and I definitely appreciate you for doing it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, Mr. Davis, I appreciate you. And uh, once again, we thank you for uh, for, for, for being a part of our spotlight on tonight. Now, if you need those yard signs, y'all go ahead and email them at hiramforcolliton@gmail dot com. So that you all can get those yard signs, and I will say, Mr. Davis, that your campaign is doing an excellent job with getting those signs out. When I come there daily into Collin County, I see them all the way, I mean, honestly, from. The time I hit the uh, the county bridge right here, uh, coming in by uh, McDaniel Town Road. All the way through, uh, on my route, I'll see them, you know, so you're doing a great job with that. Yes, sir, I mean, honestly, and uh, you know, and, and that's the only one I see. Pretty much is for the, for the house, for the uh, seat at large, so that's a great job that you're doing, and uh, we wish you all the. The many blessings uh, that you're gonna have, coming with being this uh, member at large, having this county seat. And um, and so we just want everyone in Collin County to support Mr. Hiram Davis. Uh, as he goes for this seat at large, uh, the voice for the people, your voice, your choice. Once again, go to his website, Davis for Colliton dot com. And support him there, there's several things there, events, there's, uh, you can even donate some money, maybe you don't have the time. But there's a button there for you to donate, go and donate uh, some money, it doesn't matter how much, you can just go. And make your donation to him, give uh, into his campaign, so that uh, the campaign can run. It takes money to do these things, it takes uh, your financial uh, uh, um, dollars to help him to get to where he needs to be. And so that he can uh, be able to speak up for those in Collin County, those residents there. There's over thirty-eight thousand residents that are registered to vote. So therefore, uh, they need a voice, someone that's gonna be, that's gonna stand up and not be timid or afraid. To stand up for the people, and Mr. Davis is the man to do the job. So we wanna thank him once again for coming in and for being a part of Johnson's Spotlight, sir. Um, we wanna thank you, uh, once again, if uh, you know of anyone who needs to be spotlighted or would like to be spotlighted. Or maybe you're doing something in the community that is extraordinary, and you want everybody to know about it. Please send us an email at JohnsonSpotlightone@gmail dot com. Once again, that's JohnsonSpotlightone@gmail dot com. And we'd be so grateful to get with you on a date and a time when you can come and be a part of Johnson's Spotlight. We're also on Facebook and on YouTube and on Instagram. Under uh, Johnson Spotlight, so go follow us, like us, share us. Uh, subscribe to our YouTube channel, so that you can know when things are coming about in our community. And uh, we can help support each other in this global society. Once again, thank you all for tuning in, Mr. Davis, thank you again for your presence, sir, and for blessing us this evening on. Johnson Spotlight, and we thank you all for tuning in. You all have a great evening, God bless you, and may heaven smile upon each and every last one of you. Have a good night.